And welcome to the Orange County School Board's work session, which has been scheduled today, Thursday, May 8, 2025, for the purpose of discussing BEDH, Public Input at School Board Meetings, KCE, Ethics and Lobbying Policy, and JCA, Assignment of Students to School. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session to provide public comment because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting. No action will be taken, and there will be no open public comment period in which the public normally addresses the school board on relevant topics that are related to the work of the board. Thank you so much for being with us, you few in the audience. I am Vice Chair Byrd. We have Member Salamanca, Member Ferrant, Member Douglas, Member Vanos, Member Gallo, and Member Felder. Hello. Chair Jacobs is on the phone, I believe. Chair Jacobs, are you with us? Oh, okay. She's not on the line. As a reminder, board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting, so we can focus on the matters immediately before us. To my fellow board members and district staff when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it so that our viewers can hear you clearly. Again, thank you for participating and attending today's meeting. We are going to start with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We will start today's policy reviews with policy BEDH, Public Input at School Board Meetings. For those that are listening in or tuning in, the board has had discussion on this particular policy at a previous work session. Our General Counsel, Mr. Palmerini, is bringing back changes that were discussed at that meeting, and he will present them at this time. Mr. Palmerini?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Members of the board, good morning. Policy BEDH is our public participation and public input at school board meetings policy. We've made some changes, as you all know, but for anybody who's listening, we've had a pilot program for the last year or so with regard to how we do our public comment at our four o'clock meeting and then how we do public comment in our regularly school board meetings. And what most of this policy is meant to do is to put into the policy what we've been doing as part of the pilot program, so I'm not going to go over in great detail. I'm just going to say a couple things. One, we've changed pre-agenda meeting to open public comment period. That's done all over this policy, so I'm not going to go over all of that. The other things of note, the open public comment period in paragraph B here on your screen shall begin one hour prior to the regularly scheduled meeting. That's what we've been doing, so it just codifies it and conclude no later than 45 minutes after commencing. You all have had a 45-minute public comment period, so it just codifies that concern. And in paragraph C here, it says if you want to provide public comment prior to the, for the school board's consideration at the regular meeting, public hearing, or rural development workshop, you can send an email to publiccomment@ocps 5:00 p.m. the day before. Again, as we discussed, the reason why it's 5:00 p.m. the day before, so we can, as our staff, can have time to get them, gather them, and send them to you, so you can read them before the school board meeting. And then scrolling down here, let's see, excuse me. The public, open public comment period only occurs during a pre-agenda meeting before a regularly scheduled meeting. We only do that prior to a regularly scheduled meeting. You all know that, but in case the public is wondering about that. And then paragraph 2C, this is the period where we allow speakers from the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association, the Orange Education Support Professionals Association, and the Orange County Association of School Administrators. So each of those groups gets three minutes during the regular agenda period to speak if they wish to do it. That was part of the pilot program. We're adding it in because the board indicated it wanted to keep that period. A lot of time for speakers, as we said, it's up to 45 minutes for each speaker. If we have between one and 10 speakers, they'll each get three minutes. If we have between 11 and 20 speakers, the speakers will get two minutes. And if we have 21-plus speakers, they'll each get one minute. And we have a priority list of who gets to speak in what order. Of course, parents, legal guardians, students, and employees are priority one. Residents of Orange County are priority two, and anybody who does not reside in Orange County is priority three. We got rid of the provision that says we would take telephone comment during the public input period because that was a leftover remnant from the time when we had COVID and people were calling in. We are not doing that anymore. Signing up to speak, this is obviously done through the electronic system that we have. If the electronic system were to somehow have issues, we also have the ability for folks to sign up with cards, but it's mostly through the electronic system at this point. And then relevant topics is the portion where we made the change, and we had debate on it last time, so want to get the board's input. The relevant topics that we do not allow during, or the topics we do not allow during the public input period or the public comment period is as follows. We added pending litigation. We have always prohibited folks from speaking about pending litigation. When the chair gave her remarks, she would say, "We're not addressing pending litigation. We're actually just making sure that the policy reflects what our longstanding practice has been." And then the other one is the new provisions that were added as a result of the case that we discussed previously the last time. And so this is certainly language that you all will need to give your input on. It was about whether or not people can speak about employees. And as you remember, the case that we discussed, Moms for Liberty versus Brevard Public Schools, said that, you know, teachers and employees, if you have the comment period open, they can get addressed, and they can get addressed negatively, as you remember what the court said, giving offenses a viewpoint, and you can't engage in viewpoint discrimination. So the language that we crafted would be closing the field entirely on, about students and/or employees. So it would say, comments, prohibited topics include comments and behavior, about the behavior and performance of individual employees, and comments about the behavior and academic performance of individual students. I want to be clear, this would prohibit both good and bad comments. It would close the field entirely about comments about individual employees and individual students, good or bad, because if you allow the good comments, you have to allow the bad comments. And so that is the language that I crafted coming out of the board's discussion, what I thought represented the general consensus. I know there may or may not be full consensus on that, but you all need to, that's the discussion point you all are going to have to engage in, whether or not you want this language or not. And then down here in the Code of Civility, you know, we say that the speakers will abide by the Code of Civility to the extent it does not conflict with the right of a speaker to state his or her viewpoint consistent with current federal law. This was, you know, just to ensure that if people want to speak negatively about a policy or about a direction that the board is taking in general, that they have the ability to do that and not have it be considered a Code of Civility violation. So this is meant to ensure that we're consistent with people's First Amendment right to come to the board and address their grievances to the board. And then I think the rest of the changes in this policy is just changing the nomenclature to open public comment period. So I'm going to scroll back up to the language, which I think is going to be the discussion point, and I will now turn it over to the board for any comments or questions they may have.
Thank you, Mr. Palmerini. We have Member Gallo first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So. Can't even do it with a straight face, because the first thing I was going to say is, I would like, I would like people to be able to submit their willingness to speak until 5:05 p.m. and not just 5:00 p.m. To allow five, I'm just teasing. I told John I was going to give him a hard time. So, yeah, back on track. It's just so much fun having them sitting in front of us versus beside us. So on the comments, I want to, I just want to make sure that I understand. So when we talk, when we're closing the loop, and I understand that we have to do it both ways, that is for individual speakers, or would that apply to comments by the board as well? I know we're not going to have negative comments, but I know a lot of times we share stuff about our schools, about the principals, blah, blah, blah. Will we still be allowed to do that?
So I think you all will be able to say, as part of your remarks, making comments about congratulations to this principal or that principal. This is meant for folks coming in to address you, so it's the speakers who come up during the open public comment period to say, you know, this is unfortunate, you know, Mrs. Palmerini is a great art teacher, just pulling an example at random, you know. That would be prohibited because, you know, that, another member of the public should have the right to come in and say, "Mrs. Palmerini is not a great teacher, and here's why." And that's the concern that I think the board members had with this is, well, Mrs. Palmerini doesn't necessarily know that she's going, you know, somebody's going to come in and criticize her in a public meeting, and maybe what they say about her is true or not true. And so those comments probably are best addressed with school administration, and if that fails, then with the principal leader of that particular school, and then on up the chain before it's done in a public meeting like that. So this is designed for anybody coming to speak over that to you all during the open public comment period to not have these matters addressed in the first instance, criticisms especially. But if you're going to prohibit criticisms, you're going to have to prohibit the good stuff as well.
No, that's understandable, but it would not preclude, because preclude anybody from coming up and saying, "I really love my art teacher," or, "I really," I mean, if you don't mention names, because we allow that on the negative side, too. I mean, if someone come up and doesn't specifically mention a name and say, "There's a teacher that's doing blah, 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 blah." As long as they don't mention the school or the name, we usually don't, we usually don't ask them to stop talking or to refrain.
Right. It would depend on the nature of it, right? So let's say it was, you know, "I love my child's art teacher. They're great." You wouldn't necessarily know what school that is. You wouldn't necessarily know who that is. My child's art teacher at Wolf Lake Elementary is horrible because she does this.
Well, that's identifiable.
That's identifying, right? So it depends on how they phrase it. And I would suspect that the chair would ask for my assistance if I thought the policy was being violated for me to step in and say, "Madam Chair, I think this violates the policy that we have."
Okay. Thank you. And I, I support this change in language. I know we had a discussion about what to do, what we could do in light of the recent litigation. However, I, I stand by that. That's an operational and doesn't really fall under governance, and I think that through that, that we can say, "No, this isn't, this isn't the place. We're not going to discuss it here. You have to go, you know, contact Dr. Vasquez directly." But operationally, there's nothing that we could do to help that person, so it's really not within the purview of the board. So I like this. I understand that it's going to close the loop, and it's unfortunate that they won't be allowed to say great things, because we have great teachers that are doing awesome things, but I would rather shut that down than allow people to come and be negative towards our teachers or our staff. You know, we all signed up for this. You can attack us all day long, because we decided to run, but our teachers didn't, and all they ever wanted to do was teach kids. And our admin just wanted to be a part of an education system and do good things and support our children, and they didn't sign up for that. And I already feel that there's so much on them, like, they've got to be careful what they post, they got to be careful when they're out. If someone's at a restaurant and they want a glass of wine, they don't want to have the glass of wine in front of, like, there's already so much that is on their plate that's really not fair. I don't want to add anything else to it. So I support this language. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. I too share some of the sentiments that Board Member Gallo mentioned, because I would not, oh, that's what I was trying, I'm sorry. I always would want to applaud the good work that our teachers and administrators are doing, and as you said, that if we talk about good behavior, we have to always talk about bad. And my sentiments is that if there is a complaint, we have protocol where you can come to the, your principal leaders, you can come to members of the cabinet to lodge some complaints, and it doesn't have to be aired out publicly, because I just think, again, we, that's not the kind of atmosphere that I would want to generate for our teachers and administration, even though there may be some time when, you know, people are people, they say things that are not right, they do things that are not right, and they need to be dealt with, but we have something in place. We have a superintendent, we have a cabinet that they know how to do this, so there's not a need for us to come to an open setting like this and barrage anybody's character because we don't particularly like what they've done. So I think you guys have done the best that you could do with the language in terms of what we say, but sometimes teachers do such great jobs. We just have to say something, just let them know, like, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'm so excited, you know, that we can tell teachers that we appreciate your work and what you do. So I just wanted to share that, because I do know that is a concern, but I want to remind those people, persons that are listening, that we have something in place. When there's a real, serious complaint, we have protocol in place that you can lodge your complaint, and it will get, it'll be dealt with, and we don't have to put it in an open forum like this for embarrassment. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Ferrant.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Okay, so just to piggyback on that, I was, that was my question as well, just, you know, can they speak in generalities? So not naming the school, then, would be...
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Yes, ma'am. I think that would probably be the extent of what they can do. And then for us to be able to maintain the, we're not going to allow criticisms of individual employees if it's, you know, generally, hey, my, my kid's third grade teachers... employees if it's, you know, generally, hey, my, my kid's third grade teacher is great, I love him, you know, that's outstanding, that's one thing, but I think if they start mentioning schools, you know, then, then that's getting into specific reference to the employee, so that's the line.
Okay, that makes sense. And then on page five, number 10, it says that, you know, except for sections reserved for the media, members of the public may not stand in or congregate in the back of the board chambers. But then it says likewise, members of the public shall not congregate in the lobby outside of the board chambers. Why do we have that?
There was, usually we had enough room in the boardroom for folks to come in and sit down, and so we wanted to make sure, not getting into operational details with respect to safety and security, but, you know, getting them into the board chambers when there's enough place to sit, we wanted to make sure we had that just from an operational security standpoint. And when you have, you know, board, the boardroom, you have to watch the boardroom, you have to watch outside too, so stretching security resources. That's part of what's going on with that, that provision, but, you know, I'm sure your point is there are some times when we keep people out there before they come in, you know, that's part of a staging area when we don't have enough seats in the boardroom for all of those folks to come in. The last meeting, was it the last meeting or the one before, where we had lots of recognitions? We just didn't have enough room to bring all of the people we were recognizing in at the same time, so we had to have a staging area for them. So, you know, yeah, is that technically, you know, prohibited by this language? Yes, but I think the intent and spirit of the language is when there are open spaces in the boardroom, we want to get folks in the boardroom just so we can have a handle on our facility.
Do you think it's necessary to be in there? I mean, I guess maybe there needs to be more clarification of if there's seating available, people shouldn't be out congregating. And then at what point, is this like at any time? What if they're here prior to, for the 5:00 meeting and they're just kind of hanging out prior to?
So I saw the superintendent looked like she wanted to say something to it, so.
Superintendent.
Thank you. So this language was put in around the pandemic. There were instances where staff was outside, they felt threatened, there was actually a couple of instances where people got into their face, and so it was put in as a measure of added safety and security. There's, when they're, when they come in, they are allowed to enter into the boardroom, and the police officers that we do have out there have been able to manage this. There have been times when people have been talking, there hasn't been, especially when we let them go out after the recognitions, and it hasn't been a problem, but it has, it was an issue, and it related to staff feeling unsafe.
If it's COVID-related, is there a reason we need to continue it?
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It happened. It occurred during that time period. I, I don't, I still think there could be situations where people are upset and can congregate and get into staff's face and make, face and make them feel unsafe. So I don't think this is just tied to COVID.
Would it need to be reworded maybe in a way that just says, because I think congregating is one thing where we're, people are waiting, they're congregating, but in a way that says, you know, members of the public shall not, any member of the public that congregates in the lobby and becomes aggressive will be removed or is not allowed to, you're not allowed to do that? I don't know.
So there could be, so from a safety and security standpoint, I want to leave maximum flexibility in there. We could do things like, to the extent that there's room available in the, in the boardroom, or to the extent that you're not being staged out there, we would expect that you would go into the boardroom. I could try to wordsmith language like that if that's the board's desire, but I, you know, operationally, from a security standpoint, that, you know, not all of our meetings are flowers and sunshine, and sometimes there are controversial issues and people get, you know, pretty riled up about it on both sides of the issues that we have sometimes. So I would like to leave flexibility for the superintendent and her security staff to ensure that they can maintain order. So I think that I can work language that says, to the extent that there's space available in the boardroom, the expectation is that folks will go sit in the boardroom for the meeting, and that the only way that there'll be, that congregations outside will be based upon operational determinations by the superintendent. I could work something like that, I'm not saying it great right here, but we can do something like that if that's the board's desire.
I do think that there needs a little bit more clarification, that way people don't just say, well, how come they're able to congregate outside? But if you have that kind of specification, I think it would make a little more sense.
Thank you. Yes, Superintendent?
So I guess my question would be, why would they congregate out there? They can come in, they can still stand, that area in the back, the doors are open. You know, we are living in times where, especially during a meeting, that door is open, different individuals can come in. When you go to federal buildings, government buildings, they don't let you congregate. You walk through the security, they direct you to the place where you need to be. So I, I have strong opposition of changing this because someone could be there with ill intent. Any individual that does want to gather, they're more than welcome to gather in the boardroom.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm going to go to our next board member, Member Gallo.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have an issue with the language. I agree with Dr. Vasquez, I think in the, in the times that we're in, especially given some of the subjects that are going to come before us over the next year, I think it's important, because we're going to be making hard decisions about budget, and it's not always going to be pleasant. So I agree with the language, but I do have a question. So, because it says, except for sections, it says, members of the public shall not be permitted, no, except for sections reserved for the media, members of the public may not stand and/or congregate in the back of the board chambers. I'm only asking about this because when we have a lot of recognitions and when we have a lot of new APs or principals that we're announcing, I can remember just last month, this whole back of the chamber was filled with standing people, and they were public. So would that prevent us from doing it? Because based on this language, what happened, we should not have allowed. So that's, I just want to ensure that.
We, we just addressed that either this cabinet meeting or the previous one, and we are not, we're going to actually, when we have a large number, especially with the recognitions, we're going to stage them in another area, and then they'll be able to be directed in so that we don't run into that safety situation. So, and you'll see that for Tuesday's board meeting because, once again, we have quite a number of recognitions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. I'm cut in next, and I just was going to agree with the language, and specifically because I remember that time period. And unless you were kind of a part of that as staff and board members, you really don't understand, I think, the fear that that time period that we all experienced. So I am all for whatever safety measures have to be put in place, because that was a really frightening time for many of us. So I completely agree with the language, and you could even add something in there unless directed by staff, or unless staff, you know, there's, whatever, you are good with that, but, no, I completely agree. Thank you. And it looks, I'm the last one, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this policy? Are you good?
I'm good. So I think, I'll wordsmith some language that, to the extent room is available, folks shall go in the boardroom for attendance at the meeting, or unless otherwise directed. It will be much better than what I'm saying right now, because English is failing me this morning for some reason, but it will be, I'll draft that up and I'll send it to the board, and what I'll try to do is I'll try to get it to you guys, so then on Tuesday during my attorney's report, I could say, I've sent you the language, does anybody have any issue, any concerns? And when then we can discuss there.
Perfect. Thank you. We're going to, with that, we're going to move on to 4.02, KCE, ethics and lobbying policy.
The...
Am I going straight to Dr. Vasquez or straight to Mr. Palmerini? There you go.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, I appreciate that. Members of the board, joining me, of course, is Associate General Counsel and Ethics Compliance Officer Vivian Kokotis. I'm going to drive through the policy, but she will be available to help answer any questions if I have an inability to do so. But as you all know, this policy was brought back, and the marching direction that we got coming out of there is, to the extent that we have gone beyond state law with respect to various gifts and meals and that kind of stuff, you all wanted to pull that back and essentially comply with state law. So we have gone through and made changes consistent with that. As you will see, this policy lost, I think, seven pages from it, so we have taken out a lot of information, but we'll go through it, you know, section by section, and I think, just want to make sure, you know, Madam Chair, I don't know how you want to run this, if, do you want me to get through various sections and then wait for, for questions, or I'm at the board's pleasure on that?
I don't have a preference either way, whatever's easier for you. If, what I could do is I can stop you if it looks like we're getting a lot of cues, how about that?
Excellent, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so we just did some cleanup in the first couple paragraphs, you know, to say, School Board of Orange County, Florida, consistency of terms, OCPS, just so we can use the acronym, OCPS, or the board where appropriate throughout the policy. We did some changes to business associate, but it's just to make it consistent with state law. Going down to page two on gifts, as you will see, gifts shall be defined consistent with applicable state law, we've cut out the $5 limit there, of course, you know, the, the board member gift limit is $50 under the statute, but we've cut that out. Also, you will see gratuitous meals, that definition has been taken out because the entire section on gratuitous meals has essentially been taken out, and we'll, you know, we're going to treat that in the same way we would treat gifts. Going down to the lobbying definition, we, it says, lobbying shall be defined as communicating directly or indirectly with either the superintendent, any board member, any procurement official, or any reporting individual. That's a change, we got rid of staff member with contracting authority. There's reporting individuals, folks that have to fill out ethics forms and make financial disclosures, and that generally covers folks with contracting authority, but what we wanted to do is to make it very clear that it's the reporting individuals that are required by state law to file ethics disclosures and financial interest disclosures, and the term in the statute is reporting individuals, so that's why we've made that change. Lobbying shall include without limitation all such communications regardless of whether initiated by the lobbyist or the person being lobbied, and regardless of the form of communication, be it oral, written, or electronic. So we're saying, however they attempt to communicate, we don't know what types of communication will be developed in the future, you know, God knows this thing wasn't contemplating direct messages, social media, all that when it was first drafted, so we want to leave some flexibility there. All right. Principals' professional conduct, we're just changing the rule to appropriately reflect it. Procurement official, it's a procurement employee under the statute, so we are just changing the nomenclature to be consistent with statutes. Reporting individual, we're taking the definition directly out of state law for that. We had a section in here dealing with staff members with contracting authority, we took that out. We took out the definition on school board because everybody knows who the school board actually is, didn't feel like we needed to define that. Specifications meetings shall be defined as any meeting noticed by OCPS Procurement Services Office, that's just reflecting the correct name of the department. We thought everybody knew who the superintendent was, so we didn't think we needed a definition of that. And, all right, so that's the definition sections, and I think that's probably an appropriate place to start. Are there any questions there? Okay. All right, the next section is gratuitous meals, and what you're seeing is a whole bunch of red. So that entire section there through A was not required by state law, it was something that this board created on its own, and so given the direction, we decided to remove all of it. All right? Section A, the new section A, is prohibition of gifts of influence from business associates, business entities, lobbyists, or principals, or vendors. This is state law. Pursuant to Florida law, board members and OCPS employees shall not solicit or accept anything of value to the recipient, including a gift, loan, reward, promise, a future employment, favor, or service, based upon the understanding that the vote, official action, or judgment of the board member or OCPS employee would be influenced thereby. That's directs, directly from statute. You cannot accept anything of value if it's meant to influence your decision on something that you're voting on. So we just reflected the law in there. We have a section on prohibition of gifts during the no-contact period, and says, procurement and reporting individuals shall not accept a gift from the business associate, business entity, lobbyist, principal, vendor during the no-contact period. You all know what the no-contact period is, it's once solicitation hits the street to the point in time essentially when you all, the notice of intended award has been issued. So that is the no-contact period. Of course, if there's a bid protest, that is also part of the no-contact period, right? So those reporting individuals, procurement employees shall not accept gifts from business associations, lobbyists, principal, or vendors during the no-contact period, except for the following. One, a campaign contribution otherwise disclosed on appropriate state forms. Now, we had questions about campaign contributions, we have a, you know, we just had a fundamental thought that if a campaign, or if a contribution is allowed by state law, we didn't think we should be prohibiting it in our lobbying and ethics policy. If the law allows for a contribution to be made, then we, we're going to allow it. Two, a donation made or offered to OCPS and accepted by the procurement employee or reporting individual on behalf of OCPS and not for the personal or private use of the procurement employee or reporting individual. So I'll give you a quintessential example is, somebody sends in a gift basket of, you know, cookies at the holiday, right? And so we'll get the gift basket of cookies and we say, all right, if everybody in the department wants to have one, great, it's not being accepted by that particular official, it's, okay, we're getting it, anybody in the department can have it, that's not a gift as this would be defined under the policy and under law. And then you see a whole bunch more red because we have gotten rid of the rest of the prohibitions on gifts because we are making sure that it's compliant with applicable state law. So gifts to board members here on page eight, board members shall comply with applicable provisions of Florida law regarding the solicitation, acceptance, and disclosures of any gifts. That basically says you all are governed by law and the law is what controls your behavior. So I'll stop there because it seems like a good place to stop. Are there any questions?
Would you believe there are none?
Okay.
You were expecting some, weren't you?
I, I just wanted, it was a natural breaking point, so.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions, but if you all don't have any, I'm good with that too. All right, lobbying activities. Now, what came out of this, the discussion that the board had the last time is, you know, we wanted to ensure that lobbyists were continuing to make their disclosures and to fill out the forms to indicate that they are in fact lobbying members of the board. What was being difficult for the board members was we were having board members also filling out lobbying documents when they were getting lobbied by lobbyists. And so ostensibly under the policy, we were supposed to have two sets of forms, and it just didn't seem... And it just didn't seem, with respect to what the Board was indicating to us, that you all thought that the lobbyists being filling, the ones filling out the forms should be sufficient for public disclosure purposes and for folks to be able to understand who's doing what lobbying. So the lobbying activities, the registration of lobbyists, that all remains in there. And we've just cleaned up some language, you know, acronyms. We've just made sure "school board" is "board," right? So all of this continues to be in there. And then we have a new provision that says each lobbyist, business associate, business entity, principal, or vendor engaged in lobbying shall complete and submit to the Ethics Compliance Officer the district's lobbyist and vendor reporting form for any meetings or contacts with Board members, procurement employees, reporting individuals, or the Superintendent within 10 calendar days of such lobbying contact. So making it very explicit who you have to report with respect to whom you've lobbied and who has to do the reporting, which is the lobbyists, the vendors, et cetera. We've gotten rid of other language that didn't comport with the direction that it should be the lobbyists filling out the forms. And then we have registered lobby, annual expenditure reports. This is all the same that we had previously. And then prohibition of lobbying during the no-contact period. During the no-contact period, no lobbyist, principal, business associate, and business entity vendor or a person may lobby a Board member, the Superintendent, or procurement employee, or reporting individual. We're just changing the nomenclature to reflect what state law says. Any designated procurement employees who may be identifying the procurement documents for purpose of receiving questions or clarifications or receiving the bid protest. So as you all know, when we put a solicitation out on the street, some folks may have questions about what the solicitation is, what needs to be submitted in response. So they can submit questions in a period identified in the bid document to procurement. And procurement will then answer them and submit, and send them out to all the vendors who are applying for the work. So this says, that's not lobbying. That's something that you can do as part of the procurement process. So we're exempting that out of the prohibition of contact during the, lobbying during the no-contact period. And then we also are saying Board member, the Superintendent, any procurement employee or reporting individual who has lobbied on issues, on matters unrelated to the procurement of goods and services, which are the subject of no-contact period. So of course, we could have a vendor who does multiple types of business for us and there's a solicitation for one type of business that the vendor does. They can't talk to you all about the solicitation that's out on the street. But if they have other business that's not part of the solicitation, they can continue to have those contacts. So it's ensuring that we're not closing off all communications, just the communication that involves the solicitation that's out on the street. Campaign contributions during procurement matters. Again, this was our thought that if state law allows for a campaign contribution, we didn't think we should be prohibiting it. So from that standpoint, that's why we took it out. Prohibition on lobbying by the former OCPS employees. Absent exception below, an OCPS employee may not lobby on behalf of a principal, business associate, business entity, vendor, or any other person for compensation before the Board for a period of two years. This comes from statute. There's exceptions. You know, if somebody wants to lobby you for collective bargaining purposes, they can do that. Or if the OCPS is, employees granted a waiver by the Board upon submission of a hardship application to the Ethics Compliance Officer. Ms. Kokotis would be the one that, looking at that in the first instance. You know, I don't know how often we get that, or if at all.
Never.
Never. So she's told me we've never gotten it, and she's been doing this for eight years, so. All right. We have specific exceptions that are exempt from the definition of lobbying meetings and shall not be subject to the requirements of such lobbying meetings. Partners for Success meetings and specification meetings, that's something that we've had for a long time and it's an exception that, quite frankly, I don't ever remember coming up either in my experience. All right?
Mr. Palmerini, can we stop right there?
Yes, ma'am.
We have Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, John and your team, because I know that a lot of work went into what we've discussed already and it's very much appreciated. I would just, I think all of this makes sense. And I wanna point out that at any given time, our calendars are up for, they're open records. So if anybody wanna know who we're meeting with or anything, all they have to do is put in a public records request of our calendar and it would show it. And I know that no other elected official that I'm aware of has to fill out a lobbying form. It always, the burden always falls on those who are doing the lobbying, not the ones that are getting lobbied. And in my six years of being a school board member, I can count on one hand the amount of times that I have spoken to lobbyists regarding a procurement that was happening in both of those instances. I think I talked to John and it was okay for, and many of us talked to them, and that was a recent procurement. But other than that, like it, I don't get, lobbyists don't reach out to me about procurement. They just, they just don't. They know better than to do that. And, and I think the Board does a really good job on asking the question if we need to. So I think that this language makes sense. I just wanted to really point out that we're not trying to cover anything up. There's still a very strong records request in sunshine that falls into place. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Good point. Member Vanos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question, kind of related to the same thing for the vendor forms that we no longer have to fill out. How is, so let's just say if a vendor, you know, wants to meet with you to talk about some product that they're working on or, you know, something that's not, you know, that's just sort of like, and it might be out there in the future. How are we communicating to them that they need to fill out this form? Is that, is that just something they know? Or do we need to communicate that to them? Or how do we ensure that that is being done?
So I'll start, and then if Ms. Kokotis has anything to add, I'll let her chime in, of course. Obviously, by publication of this policy and they should be aware of it. It's an official act of this Board, so they have constructive notice of it, number one. Number two, with respect to our procurement offices, they also have vendor information that allows them to know, hey, that there's, we've got lobbying restrictions and here's where you can find them, et cetera. So there's, when they're going to do business and that they wanna do business, because I think we have on our website, you know, for current and prospective vendors, you know, things that you need to know about OCPS. So that's part of what goes on, too. But Ms. Kokotis, if you have anything to add.
Generally, if a vendor is going to reach out to the Board members, sometimes they will call and say, I'm an existing vendor, I have an existing contract, I wanna discuss X, Y, and Z with a Board member. Do I need to register as a lobbyist? What do I need to do? And I can certainly give them that guidance. If they are an existing vendor and they wanna talk to you about their existing contract, we don't require them to register as a lobbyist. If they are trying to use that position to springboard, to advocate for a different position or to expand their services, then they are functioning as a lobbyist and we do ask them to register. Our standard contracts specifically mention KCE. We ask them to abide by KCE. Our procurement officials develop relationships with the vendors over the contract period and the billing and all that. And so I think that rapport, a vendor will often ask a procurement official, I wanna do X, Y, and Z. Can I do that? If they have any concerns, they contact me. So we tried to get at KCE through a variety of ways, not just throwing it into an agreement and then all of a sudden saying, you didn't comply with it. And most of our vendors are mindful of the ethics rules and so they will inquire if they have any concerns because they don't want it to impact their existing relationship with us, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I think my question was really more about people who are not currently vendors. But it sounds like constructive notice is enough. It's up there, so it's kind of on them. They should read the policy and we're good.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Vanos. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on what Member Vanos said, because I think she brings up an interesting point. Because we go to a lot of conferences where there's vendors, where there's people who are, you know, handing us cards, giving us pamphlets on their product. They may necess, it not be, may not be something we're in the market for, may not be a good fit, whatever. But we do, we do talk to a lot of people because they're there to talk to us. And a lot of times, like, I'll just say, give me your information, and then I'll send it to procurement. I'm like, just FYI, you know, I met this person. If there's any ever need, here's a contact. Would that require that the person that reached out to me, would that require them to fill out a lobby form?
No, not at all. The definition of vendor in the policy is much more narrow than a business entity. A vendor is someone who is already registered to do business with OCPS. It excludes a host of categories, government officials, government agencies, charitable, nonprofit, volunteer organizations, folks providing us with free and gratuitous services. So for purposes of KCE, a business entity that you encounter, if they don't already do business with us as a registered vendor, they don't fall under the definition of KCE. So that wouldn't require a documenting of a meeting. But if they have an existing working relationship with us, we're paying them for something, we have a pending agreement, they are a registered vendor with OCPS, if they do reach out to you, they, they need to be mindful of, of the policy.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And that was the last question on that section.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Continuing on with conflicts of interest. No Board member or OCPS employee shall have or hold any employment or contractual relationship with any business entity or agency which is subject to the regulation of or doing business with an agency for which he or she is an officer or employee. You can't do business with OCPS as a Board member or employee. So, and this prohibition's taken straight out of the straight, state law. So we're just reproducing state law language in here. Scrolling down, at the bottom of page 12 is just cleaning up our language to make sure it's consistent. And you will see lots of, we're leaving the non-employment by vendors of current OCPS employees. Obviously, that could create conflicts. Unemployment by vendors of certain former OCPS employees, we're keeping that in place. That's the, to stop the revolving door of, they work for us one day and then the next day they're working for the vendor that they administered the contract for when they were here. So we have the prohibition for a period of one year that prohibits that. You know, this can be waived by the Ethics Compliance Officer, the Superintendent. But that is a very, I think it's pretty rare that we've had that occur, so. And then on to everybody's favorite section, Product Testimonials. This language is something that we have discussed on now multiple occasions. And it says, absent the explicit contracted authority to solicit or use testimonials, meaning if they put it in the contract that we will give them testimonials, that's one thing. But absent that, no vendor, a vendor shall not use the testimonial of an OCPS employee without the written consent of the Ethics Compliance Officer, the Superintendent, or designate. This restriction includes testimonials in any form, including written, oral, or electronic communication, or, including written, oral, or electronic, and in any form, including but not limited to websites or emails. An OCPS employee who provides a testimonial to a vendor without the written consent of the Ethics Compliance Officer, Superintendent, that should probably conclude, or designate there to be consistent. So we will make that change. Let me write that note to myself. Is subject to disciplinary action, including but not limited to dismissal. Of course, that does not mean they would be dismissed. It's just, they would be subject to disciplinary action and it could range all the way up to that. So, and then number three, an OCPS employee may provide a testimonial for any vendor who is a charitable foundation organized under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code, which provides the district complimentary goods and or services. The following criteria shall, will be utilized for such testimonials. An OCPS employee's decision to participate and to provide a testimonial is entirely voluntarily, entirely voluntary and shall be based upon the employee's personal experience. OCPS will not be identified by name in any testimonial. No individual OCPS school will be identified by name or likeness. No filming will take place on OCPS property. No use of the OCPS district logos or individual school logos. OCPS employees who provide testimonials will be identified by first name, position, and type of school. Again, Susan Interventionist Elementary School, but it won't say Orange County Public Schools. It won't say the school within Orange County Public Schools. No quantitative data will be included in any testimonial unless the data is approved by the district's Research, Management, and Strategy Director. The vendor shall submit all testimonials secured from OCPS employees to the Ethics Compliance Officer, the Superintendent, or designate for review prior to use or publication in any form. Such review shall be limited to ensuring compliance with the requirements listed above. This is consistent with what we have done previously and brought to this Board. But we just wanted to make sure and go over it again in case there were any questions. Intellectual property and goods and services sold back to OCPS, we've left that the same. The duties of the Ethics Compliance Officer remain the same. We still thought it was valuable to have the Ethics Compliance Officer to ensure compliance with the policy and answer questions by employees. Investigating, investigations and penalties, that's the same as well. We're just cleaning up language to, from school board to board to be consistent with our definition. This is all the same. Appeals of final recommendations on disciplinary actions to the Board, this is all the same. Violations by OCPS employees, this is by any OCPS employee violating provisions of policy, subject to disciplinary action, including but not limited to dismissal of employment. Again, it's not one of those where we're gonna go directly to termination, but we want the ability to be able to terminate if it's egregious enough. Avoiding or terminating a contract for lobbying during the no-contact period. We have provisions to terminate contracts in our, in our standard agreements anyways. We can terminate them within 30 days for no cause whatsoever. So if we had any questions about any improper contact, improper lobbying, we don't need the policy provision to be able to do it. We can just terminate within 30 days. So that's why we sort of view the language to be superfluous and that's why we're getting rid of it. Outside employment of OCPS employees, lest anybody think that we are not applying, adhering to a code of ethics, this is a name change under the state rules. The code of ethics for the education profession in Florida was actually deleted and then put into the Principles of Professional Conduct for the education profession in Florida, probably about 12 or 13 years ago. So it's all there, but it's all in the Principles of Professional Conduct for the education profession in Florida. So we're just making sure the name appropriately reflects what's in the State Board of Education rule. And you'll see that change in multiple places. And I've just given you the statutory and rule-based site for that. So that's all the same. We're not, not adhering to the code of ethics. It's there. With respect to application of ethics in lobbying policy to outside vendors, contractors, and consultants, we're just making changes to the nomenclature, again, to make it consistent. Procurement employees, Principles of Professional Conduct is in there. Getting rid of school in front of Board. And now we have reached the end of the policy. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Palmerini. The speaker board is clear. I know.
And I'm going to get out while the getting is good.
I just wanna say real quick, thank you. I know this, this was a labor-intensive process for you and your team. So I appreciate you really hearing us and, and doing all the work on this. Because I think this just makes so much more sense with it, you know, being aligned with state statute and, you know, that we already have enough to keep track of, all of us and all of our staff, that we don't need to add extra burden where we don't need it. So thank you for hearing us on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now I am getting out of this chair and then turning it over to Stacy.
Great, thank you. As Stacy's moving in, our next policy is going to be JCA, Assignment of Students to School.
Our last policy of the morning has to do with assignment of students to school. This is another policy that the team has been working on to make some significant adjustments, allowing for more choice- allowing for more choice opportunities, clarifying some of the language in the policy. So I am going to turn it over to, is it Alkevia, or is it Stacy? All right, go ahead.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent. This morning, we will be presenting to you Policy JCA. The first, we're on page one, the first red line in subsection one, we added the definition of siblings. This came from our Magnet School Policy, so we just took that definition and put it over here so that further down in the policy, when we discuss siblings, that parents are on notice of what we would consider a sibling. Change of address, we deleted that section. Subsection B is actually going to be, we added it in the application section, but we completely removed subsection A to A because it was no longer needed. And what will be subsection two, applications, we added the language, the guardian completing the application must have the authority to enroll and withdraw the child as outlined in Board Policy KBBA. We added that language so that we could strike out the language where we're requiring them to bring a parenting plan affidavit, all of that stuff, that would have been already provided to the Office of Student Enrollment based on our policy KBBA. So we will only allow the parent that has the ability to enroll and withdraw to complete that application, so there's no conflict between the parents. What will become subsection three, 3D, we just added sibling to that line. And you'll see why further down in the policy. Just to clarify that the sibling, if the sibling has an IEP and they're transferring with the student, the sibling, the school will have to look at the sibling's IEP as well to make sure that they can accommodate that. In subsection 3E, we added the language "out of county" to include, I know previously there was some discussion about if a parent changes their address, they should be able, since they're already on a transfer, they should be able to stay. So we just added that language that we will have to review it if the parent removes, only if the parent removes "out of Orange County." And like I stated before, we added subsection, we just moved subsection F from the previous section and included so that any application containing misleading or false information may be grounds for the denial of the application and revocation of the transfer. And what will become subsection 4A, we took that language from our Board Policy JFBD, the Magnet School Programs Policy. There was some discussion at our previous meeting about how would we review transfers and students if they're having any disciplinary issues or anything like that, or tardies because they, you know, they're too far from the school, so they're consistently becoming late. The Magnet School Policy actually addressed that, so we just took that language from the Magnet School Policy and put it over here. And it states, upon enrollment, students and guardians may be required to sign an agreement of understanding indicating certain academic attendance and behavioral requirements. Students who fail to meet the standards set forth by the transfer school may be placed on probation for one grading period. The probationary form shall be completed and signed by all applicable parties. If the violation is corrected during a specified time period, the probation will no longer apply. If there is insufficient improvement at the conclusion of the probationary period, the transfer will be revoked, and the student will be required to return to his or her own school at the end of the semester or the end of the school year, whichever occurs first. And I believe it was asked in Cabinet about the form that is going to be a form that student enrollment is going to create so that it's consistent at every school. And the new subsection five, we just added the language, public option to distinguish between the scholarship provided by the state and the public school option that is required to be offered by school districts to parents of students with disabilities under the IDEA. And again, we added that public option to distinguish under subsection A3. And added the language based on, so it will read, the public option allows guardians of qualifying students with disabilities to enroll an eligible student in another school within OCPS. Students will be enrolled based on availability at the receiving school as well as the receiving school's ability to appropriately implement the student's IEP. The following shall apply to FES UA public option transfers. And again, we've removed school choice plan as this was a requirement under the McKay Scholarship, which the FES UA has replaced, but it's not in the FES UA statutory language. We currently use capacity lists under the controlled open enrollment option to determine a school's availability. And, excuse me, under subsection C, siblings, we added, siblings shall be eligible to transfer with a student who has granted the FES UA public option, and we removed the language so long as the school has available seat for the sibling and is not over capacity. And that language was removed based on board members' recommendation, and you will see that removed from each of the transfer options. So same thing, we're on page four, subsection B, that language is just updated throughout the policy to remove the capacity requirement. We added siblings there for clarity, because it said students, so we want to make sure that this applies to siblings and not all students. And, sorry, it looks a little weird on the red line, because the red line is just going to leave it as its two paragraphs, but that paragraph A, the new paragraph A will read, siblings may remain at the school until all grade levels at the school are completed, for example, K5, 6 through 8, 9 through 12, with the exception of Windy Ridge grades 6, 8, excuse me, and Arbor Ridge grades 6, 8, or there is a change in placement of the ESE student, is how that one paragraph will read. We moved the entire academic transfer option because it's no longer applicable. This transfer was originally meant for, for example, students continuing in JROTC or something like orchestra, but now these kind of programs are offered at virtually all of our schools, so it's no longer needed. And E, we may have to update that language. There was Senate Bill 166 is requiring that to now say, may require, it hasn't passed yet, to say at least twice annually instead of every 12 weeks.
Sorry to interrupt, but do you mind if we take a little break, because we have several board members that are already cued in?
Yes, so I will go back up, sorry.
No, that's okay. Let's start with Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a couple of questions. On page five, the Windy Ridge and the Arbor Ridge, help me understand, I know that the 6 through 8 in both schools are considered a magnet program, and they have to apply to it, but if a sibling is at Arbor Ridge, is Arbor Ridge under-enrolled? Because if they're at Arbor Ridge or Windy Ridge, they're there because they're zoned in K through 5?
So, correct. Arbor Ridge and Windy Ridge, K through 5, you're zoned.
Right.
6 through 8, you apply. Yes.
So it says, the students may remain at the school until all grade levels are completed, and then it lists those schools, but they would have to, they're not at that school because their sibling is in the magnet, they're at that school because they're zoned to be there. So I'm just curious as to why we have the language.
Not necessarily. If I'm in the magnet 6 through 8, and I have a sibling that's K through 5, then they would be able to go K through 5, even though they're not zoned for Arbor Ridge or Windy Ridge. So I'm in the magnet.
But if Arbor Ridge and, so maybe, I'm just getting confused, but if Arbor Ridge and Windy Ridge are not in the controlled open enrollment, would the sibling still be allowed to go there? Would we still accept them just because their sibling was in the magnet school?
So I'm not understanding the beginning, but if I get a seat, I get a seat in 6 through 8, I'm not zoned, because you can go to Windy Ridge or Arbor Ridge, 6 through 8, under the magnet transfer. But I have a sibling that's K through 5, then they can come to Arbor Ridge or Windy Ridge with me because I received a seat through magnet.
Okay, so even if the school isn't what we considered controlled open enrollment, even if they're not under-enrolled? We still allow the sibling, so they could be at 100% capacity, but we would allow the sibling to go to that school as well?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yes. The board asked for it.
We did, we did. I was just trying to clarify when I saw that, I was just trying, because I knew that they were a magnet, and I'm thinking, okay, so that's what we're doing, perfect. Thank you for that. And then on, and I think I mentioned this before, when we, I think if we go back to an open school, and I know that I'm in the minority, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but I still believe in my heart that if we accept a child to come to a school under controlled open enrollment, if they have attendance issues, academic issues, they shouldn't be treated any different than they would be treated at their zone school, because that is now their home school. And if there's disciplinary actions that need to happen, that should happen. If they get suspended, they should get suspended, but they should be treated at that school like they would at their home school. I don't know why we're sending them back to their home school to then be put, if you're in your home school, you can't be put on probation, you can't be kicked out. I understand magnets, that we have that language, and I support that language because you're applying for a seat at a magnet for like a STEM or for performing arts, and you would be taking a spot away from someone else that may not be able to get in. But if we're under-enrolled and that student just wants to go to that school, I really truly believe in my heart that they should be treated like that is their home zone school, and whatever consequences would happen at their zone school should just happen at that school, but that they shouldn't be removed and sent back to their zone school. So I just want to make those comments.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Vanos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question about the 5C, and it wasn't in the red line, but I just wanted to clarify, if there's a transfer based on an IEP, basically for an ESE student, that the decision is made by, it sounds like reading the policy, so I just want to clarify, the decision is made by the IEP team regardless of like what the next nearest school is or what has capacity? Is that true?
So for clarification, you're asking, if I receive a transfer to, let's say Arbor Ridge, and the student has an IEP, and Arbor Ridge does not have a unit or the capabilities of accommodating that child's accommodations or needs, then it would be denied because the school could not meet the IEP?
Right, but if the, I guess what I'm saying is, let's say if there's an IEP meeting, and the IEP team decides, okay, your zoned middle school doesn't have the services that you need, and the IEP team says, we believe that X school is the best option for this particular student, that's what controls?
So, yes, but under transfers, we don't make that decision. So, correct. If an IEP team meeting is held, and they do an ESE placement to a school, that is that placement. But if a child or a parent applies for a transfer through student enrollment to go to a school other than the ESE-placed school, we would defer to the ESE team to help us make a decision on whether or not the school that the parent has applied for can meet that child's needs.
Got it, okay. So that really rests with, again, the IEP team, but not really with transfer?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you. Member Salamaka.
Thank you, Chair. This is to Angie's comment. I'm not totally on that side of this, but I did express concerns around giving our students and being a little bit more flexible, because life happens. And so I appreciate the new language to address the kind of probation period and one, my comment to that is, it feels one is a little harsh still. Like I, sometimes something happens, you're in one probation for one grace period, I think you have it on there, that's language, right? So I'm hoping if we could find a middle ground between Member Gallo's all-in-all-the-time, but also having a little bit of forgiveness, because life happens, cars break down, your transportation is obviously not a thing if you're transferring. So I, I think this is related, obviously, to attendance and behavior, but we see a lot of kids that learn from their behavior after one time. So, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know if, I'm not pushing for the other one, I just, I may be saying maybe more than once.
The Superintendent wants to comment on this.
This is the one I'm referring to.
Yeah, so schools are extremely generous when it comes to revoking a transfer. So it's not that a child has been tardy one time, two times, even 10 times. They do meet with the family or attempt to meet with the family to see how they may be able to assist. They are sometimes very creative, so maybe the child can't get there for first period, so first period could become an independent study course so that they are not continually being marked tardy. So the schools are incredibly flexible with trying to retain the students. To address some of the comments, Board Member Gallo, if they're not coming to school, then they are, it's not an incentive for them to not have any consequence. And so the idea... And so the idea behind um, having some type of consequence if a child is there on a transfer, because this is a choice, parent for whatever reason is picking this school to attend, so we want you to come to school, we don't want you to be late, we do want you to behave. And so those are ways to help reinforce that you wanted to come here, but if you're constantly absent, you're tardy, you're disrupting the school, clearly this isn't the right place for you. And so I think that is where the schools, again, with limited resources, and I I disagree, I don't think that is their school. I think when you apply for a transfer, this is a choice that you have made, but your zone school is where you were, you were des- you were supposed to go to school. Um, and I think for administrators and for teachers, because we hear this a lot from teachers, when a child is consistently tardy, absent, or is disruptive in their class, and the teachers find out they're there on a transfer, the teachers are going to the administrators, say, what are the options that we have? Because this child is causing me additional concerns. They are disrupting the class and the students in my class are not able to learn. It's a very small number, very, very small number of students that do not make it when they are look, when they are at a, a transfer school. But I know that we have had a lot of feedback from administrators and even some teachers that we would take this out of there and that it would create more problems for them at the school.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, I'm actually queued in next and I was gonna talk about this as well. I can, I can really see both sides of it. But I'm still struggling with what Member Gallo said with, you know, all schools have this issue though. And this is, like, if we're, I don't know, like, okay, tardy, for example. We've got students in every school that are tardy every day, um, and we don't have any consequence. We're not enforcing any consequence at the zone school for those kids. So I'm just trying to understand, um, I don't, I don't know, there's something about, there's something about a teacher saying, this child is disrupting my class and the students in my class, what can we do? Oh, we can revoke their transfer and send them to this school. It's, it's, there's something I don't like about that and and that's, and I can't fi- I can't pinpoint it, but it just seems like it's very, um, I don't know, um. Right, I mean, you're sending a problem child to another school for another teacher to deal with. The child's behavior still has to be dealt with. We still have to figure out, why is this child misbehaving? Why is they, why are they causing this disruption? There's that, that reason's not gonna go away when we transfer them back, so I don't know. I I'm still, I still, gives me a little bit of heartburn, but I do understand, I mean, there's just something about, this is not one of our kids. It's like this mentality of this is not one of our kids. This, this child's here as a visitor, I don't know. I don't like it, I I get it, I get it, and I understand administrators want to be able to have this, but I just don't love it. And I want to make sure that if we do this, that the probation form is being reviewed, and I'm assuming it would be, I'm assuming it would go through at least, I don't know who, principal leader or somebody to look at and make sure that this is being done for the proper reason, because this is the other thing I'm thinking. A parent that goes through the trouble of transferring their child and driving them every day is probably going to be a very involved parent. And we love our very involved parents. Sometimes very involved parents can be, can for cer- some administrators or some teachers be a lot, I'm just gonna be honest. Um, and I don't want to see parents, I don't want to see teachers, administrators not wanting to deal with certain parents and therefore saying, we're revoking this child's transfer because of that. I'm just being honest. Um, so those are my concerns with that. So yeah, if you could just address those few things for me, thank you.
I think it would be a very good idea for us to just pull the data, because there aren't not many transfers that are revoked. And again, I want to stipulate that it's not that they're at, that they are absent ten, fifteen, twenty times. We're talking students that are, are beyond that and they have tried interventions. And sometimes the reason they're not coming to school is because they don't have the transportation. And so if you do have the transportation to get to your home school, then maybe your attendance will improve. So even with discipline, it's not that they've misbehaved once or twice, because we do have the code of conduct that allows us to uh, apply the consequences across all of the schools. But it is a matter of having numerous referrals, fifteen, twenty referrals in the intervention that they have tried have not worked. So I think it would be very helpful for the board to actually see what the number is that have been revoked, and let's go back maybe three or four years, and also include the number of transfers that we've approved, because I suspect that you're gonna see that's less than a half a percent. It's a very, very small number of students whose um, transfer gets revoked and parents sometimes aren't even aware of some of those situations. Maybe, you know, their child um, is supposed to be going to school and they're skipping, so they try to drill down to what the actual problems are and what the issues are. So our teachers and our administrators work incredibly hard with all of the children that they have on their campus. So Stacy, if you and the team can pull that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Superintendent. And yes, and I, and I apologize if um, my comments maybe were a little harsh. I I totally agree that our teachers and our administrators are fantastic. I just don't, I just want to make sure that everything is kinda protected in that way. Uh, Member Felder is next.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you, Chair, and this is such a wholesome conversation. First of all, let me thank you all. Well, this is a good one. Thank you for the work, because I, I'm on, a recipient on both sides, because there was a situation that you all worked very well with me, uh, with a, a child in our um, our, our district and the sibling was in the magnet program and the, and the, the smaller sibling was in like pre-K or fifth grade, I mean, first grade or something. So you all worked it out so they could uh, go and, and there was a serious language barrier. So the little child needed to be with the sibling. So I do appreciate that effort. I'm also on the other end of dealing with magnet programs. I opened Dr. Phillips in nineteen eighty-seven. It was a performance art, performance arts magnet and a Center for International Studies magnet. And when you have a situation where uh, students and parents, they're vying for a position, you know, I remember one time, Dr. Phillips enrolled was like four thousand eight hundred. We, when the classes would change, we would literally stand like this in the hall for fear of getting run over, you know, because of so many people. And when you have a situation there and when people are desirous of going to a particular magnet school and you have somebody there who's not coming, and I agree with the superintendent, the absenteeism, when it's really looked at, it has to be like thirty or forty. You got some kids missed thirty days and you got this one kid standing on the end wanting to be a part of the magnet program. I also understand and agree with uh, Vice Chair Bird when she said, you know, who are we to just say, because you, you didn't come to school, you can't now, not come to that school, but you have to look at, we're in, we're in the business of educating and we're in the business of trying to grow our little minds into big, strong minds and in the real world. If you don't meet the criteria, then there's a consequence. I know that sounds cold, but that's the world. The fact of the matter, you have these, I, I, I must talk to Greg at least two or three times a year about the magnet program, whether it, when it's been closed and on the waiting list, because parents are constantly calling me, asking me, can they get in? And I say, well, I think you're on a waiting list. And then when they go through all that and they get there, then you have this kid who's gotten there and it's taken a seat and is not coming. I'm not talking about two or three absences, I'm talking about, we have some students missed thirty days, forty days. That's a serious issue. And then I've been on the end as a teacher, teaching in the magnet program where I've had a student who has just been beyond, like, you know, and you do look and the first thing they, they look, say, well, is this, is this the home school? And I mean, that's human nature, that's what we do. We want to be comfortable the most part. So I know that this probably is a policy that we may have to revisit, but I, I appreciate the effort that you have put in to try to make sure it's fair. But I'm a proponent of the fact that if you're, have you, if you've been chosen to be in a magnet program, you need to come to school. And you need to participate and do what's necessary uh, to maintain yourself in that magnet program, because in the magnet programs we have in, in OCPS, they are numerous and they're competitive. You know, these children we have in this district are exceptional. They are exceptional. And so if you have taken a seat, then I, I, I think you should do your best to stay there and, and, and do what's necessary and not be a problem, because to most magnet teachers, man, they so, they are so in tune to that particular subject area and it wears them out when there's a student who constantly disrupts and they can't get, and because we don't have about fifty-two minutes in a class, in twenty-five minutes of that, fifty-two minutes is dealt with clerical, roll call, answering the intercom and passes and that kind of madness. So you don't have about twenty-five to thirty good minutes of real good teaching. So when you have a disruptive student, uh, just constantly, uh, it, it is more than a notion. I know, because I've been on, I've been in that position. So uh, I, I don't know, I guess we may have to revisit some things, because I, I don't want to just put children out, I want them to have the opportunities, but I concur with the superintendent, it's not like two or three absences. Sometimes it's thirty or forty. And there's some other things they're doing, making threats. I've, I've had students do that, you know, and so we have to deal with that. So that's my little five cent, not two cent on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Ferrant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to um, chime in on the topic of um, revoking somebody's transfer. I think as well, I agree that uh, we, from what I've seen, the district goes above and beyond to make sure that students are accommodated and I've, um, one student that I was uh, speaking to a principal with who, um, elementary student, they are tardy nearly every single day, they live completely across town, um, and the principal goes above and beyond to sit with the parent, talk with the parent, how can we get your child here on time? This may not be the best placement for your child, let's look at something closer to your home. But they continue to allow the child because they want this child to have the opportunity of the magnet program. That's in elementary, I think there is a little more grace in elementary, because it's not the child's fault, it's really more, and you know, maybe even in middle, because they literally can't drive themselves. So high school is definitely different, I think um, that's, I think we, the standard for high school should be a little different, but um, so for me, I do, I, you know, I appreciate the extra comments, uh, Superintendent, I think that is helpful for us to see that there's, you know, it's not like if you're tardy ten times, this is like egregious amounts, I think is really what you're telling us, is that when it's been, it's so excessive that you say, hey, this really is a privilege. I think transfers and the school choice, all of it is a privilege. Um, we're zoned for a certain school. I love, love, love that we have these options, um, and I love that parents are able to uh, take these options and find what's best for their child. But at the same time, we do have to, there's gotta be some sort of standard, otherwise it's just a free-for-all and kind of clown show if we don't have something uh, set in place. So I appreciate it. Um, and I also, I look forward to um, uh, hopefully revisiting that policy, J F B D for magnet school programs, because I do think there is some maybe tweaking that we could do to help make sure that those magnet programs um, stay top-notch. I think our po- our magnet programs to me is a different um, type of transfer than just your, um, the other transfers that are listed here. That one to me is really a, a choice, you're making this, or you're committing to behave, to show up on time. It's a, it's a commitment, because it is like a four-year, you're committing. Um, if you don't, then you're really taking from a student who, who really does want to be there. Um, and so I look forward to revisiting that along with Member Felder. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. Member Douglas?
Thank you, Vice Miss. How do you say, Madam Vice? Sorry, I'm new. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, I just wanted to say that I really commend you for your, um, for listening to our comments and making the change that you have made. Thank you so much for allowing the sibling to be with their brothers and sisters in the school, that's really, really, I really appreciate that enormously, thank you. Uh, and I just wanted to give an accolade to, to OCPS for the, you know, really, uh, you know, making an effort to make sure that our students have, you know, options and choices, such as mag- magnets program. So when you have a magnet program, for example, I think it's a, and you are being, you have been accepted into the magnet program, you have an obligation to attend. You know, I think it's a privilege and uh, you have an obligation to attend and if we can, and if we want to remain competitive, that's the only way we can make a little bit, just a little bit stringent, uh, just like uh, Member Felder and Member Ferrant uh, just stated. We need to, to, to make sure that um, we have a level of, uh, you know, obligation as far as the magnets program are concerned and other programs as well. Okay, so uh, you know, making maybe that little, you know, difference in, in the, how do you call, K C? Anyway, you know what I'm talking about, the document will be great. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Member Vanos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also just wanted to um, share my support for the language that we currently have in the student continuation criteria. Um, you know, and I, and just to sort of echo what the superintendent said, and I know we're not talking about magnet schools, um, but I look forward to that conversation because I feel like it'll be a very long and interesting one. But, but I, I do think, you know, even, even just being a parent in a magnet school and being on SAC, like, even in magnet schools, the lengths that a school will go to to keep a student there and to not revoke that magnet, um, I think says a lot. And, and so, I mean, that's even in a magnet school. So I, I do know that, that principals and admin and teachers are working really hard. Um, but I appreciate Member Felder's comments and just the empathy she shared for, for the students, but also sort of the acknowledgement of what happens in the real world on being on, on the ground, you know, in classroom in a school. And I, I will share that in my visits to schools, incentives are so, so important for our administrators to have, um, and the lengths that they go to to make up incentives for students to have good behavior and to show up on time and to be in school, um, it's incredible. They are so creative and I think having this in their toolbox, um, to just encourage students to attend and to behave and to, to do what they need to do in school, I think is important. So um, just wanted to share that I do support this language that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. And um, I'm queued next, so I just, um, and thinking a little bit more about it, I, I appreciate completely that um, the schools go above and beyond. I think my, my biggest issue is just that, to be quite honest, I feel like we should have, we should have probation forms for all of our students. I'm not kidding. Like, this is where my, this is where my issue is, like, why, and magnets are totally different discussion, because they are taking up a seat, you know, it's totally different discussion. are taking up a seat, you know, it's totally different discussion. But for transfers and for our regular students, we are, we have nothing, as you said, like incentive-wise, for attendance, for tardies, for absences, for even behavior, if it's just disruption, if it's not like something serious. Like, there is, these, our poor teachers and our administrators have nothing in their toolbox to be able to incentivize to get these kids to come to school every day for their zone school even. So this is what I would propose. Why don't we have a probation form for all of our students? You get warnings when you're tardy. You get warnings when you're absent. If you don't change this, you're going to be put on academic probation. And then if you don't change it after that, then you are, have to go to, I don't know, Orange County Virtual. If you cannot behave and you cannot, and you cannot arrive at school every day, why are we allowing zoned kids to cause these disruptions every day? And why are we allowing it for our regular kids and not for our transfer kids? That's where my angst is. Like, I would like, I don't have a problem with this language either, but I would like to see it for all of our students. Like, that's my, where my issue is. I feel like, yeah, I don't know. I, I really, and I, maybe it's just I'm having an issue with the absences right now, maybe with my own child, I will just say. I am trying to get my child to graduate in 10 days and getting, you know, them to go to school every day. So, but you know, when, it's not just my child though, but I hear it a lot from parents. I mean, a lot. I just had a parent yesterday telling me, my child is telling me they don't have to go to school there. My child's, you know, and so we have got to find a way to hold these kids accountable somehow. And so I would, I would love to see us be drastic, drastically changed, the way we allow our kids to behave and attend school. That is kind of where I'm at with that. I know that I see the superintendent wants to comment, I'm sure, on what I just said. So I'll let her chime in.
No, so I was giddy because I don't think we've seen Greg Moody smile that much in what, ever, ever. So we certainly can go back. I do believe that there are several roadblocks to what you're proposing, although I think you will find the vast majority of teachers, administrators in support of that. But although Orange County Virtual is an OCPS school, you know, the language around, you know, FAP that says they, they have the right to attend the school. So we, we can start to look at that, maybe look at a pilot where we're putting in more restrictions around attendance and behavior, which is the biggest deterrent right now for our, our teachers, our administrator, and even the parents. I mean, when you talk to parents of children that are constantly disruptive and not attending school, they're, they're frustrated as well. So we, we'll go back and investigate what is possible, and then we can come back to the board or share that information. If it is possible, I can, I can tell you that it's something that would have great support.
Thank you, Superintendent. Yes, Mr. Moody?
Madam Vice Chair, if I may, anytime, Orange County Virtual's, and, and for the record, I do smile quite a bit, actually. Now, so Orange County Virtual is the largest and most successful virtual franchise in the state of Florida, other than Florida Virtual. So kudos to what the team is doing over there. Got to put a plug in every time I talk about Orange County Virtual. But I just wanted to bring, make you aware, we are, actually, when you talk about attendance and chronic absenteeism, our plan for this year is to, as we increase choice and provide parents more information. A lot of them don't realize that, of those chronically absent students, that they do have a choice of virtual. So that they can go to virtual instead of if a traditional school day does not meet their needs for one reason or another, a virtual option or a blended option, part virtual, part brick and mortar is always an option. So we are going to target students who have been chronically absent in the near future, in the very near future, and provide opportunity, make sure they're aware of opportunities that they may not be aware of, of, you know, virtual instruction and how, you know, if you don't like to go to school, but you are successful in school, you have, and many of our kids that are chronically absent have a 2.5 GPA or higher. Some of them are over 4.0. So those students who are, or that are being successful, the traditional school, 7:30 to 2:30, may not be for them. But I've got a, a virtual option for you that, that may be. So we are going to target those students this coming year and, and provide more options for them, hopefully.
I love it. I love it. And thank you. And thank you, Superintendent, for saying the parents are frustrated too. Because I think for, for parents, you know, it's, I'm always, and we were just discussing this before the board meeting, I'm a big proponent of natural consequences for kids. I feel like when they see, oh, man, if I don't do this, this happens, instead of mom and dad are going to be mad, or mom and dad said I have to, it, it doesn't provide that kind of, you know, inspiration to do things. And I think if a child says, you know, oh, if I'm late again, I'm gonna, I don't know, when I was in school was, I'm gonna get detention. I'm gonna have to stay after school for detention. Or I'm gonna have lunch detention. I remember that. Oh, my gosh. So I would make sure I was always at school, you know, on time, just because I didn't want to have to go through that. But there is literally nothing like that going on right now. So it's hard to be the parent saying, you gotta go to school. But I know you have, like Greg said, you've got all your assignments turned in, you got all A's, and you don't get in trouble. So I don't really know why you have to go, but other than I'm a parent and I'm telling you have to go, right? So yeah, I think that if anything we can do to help parents out would be huge. And then I think that would also help, of course, help our schools as well. Member Salamanca is next.
Thank you. I, it's an intriguing idea. I'm, I'm, I think, you know, for me, when I looked at this, I agree, I think some part of it is around the, you know, this is, you know, not our kids. Like, that's kind of where I get the heartburn of, and for me, it's not on the magnet schools. I think all of our magnet schools, especially in high school, they do a lot of work to get kids to, one, obviously, we want them to graduate, but two, like, if you're a magnet, for them to, to spend time developing those skills. And my concern falls a little bit more, I think, Member Ferrant mentioned, like, elementary and middle school students don't have a lot of control over their own transportation and attendance. And that's when this can kind of punish the student, do too stuff outside of them and take away their, you know, opportunity to perhaps be in a program that is good. And, and I know I mentioned this last time, which was actually along the lines of some grading exemption, right? So if I'm an elementary school kid, and yes, my attendance isn't great, but my grades are good, then I don't, maybe like that, you're doing the most you can within your control as a student. But if you're not being driven every day, like, I think that's hard. And so I think it's good that we're gonna have this period where we're, hopefully, we're sitting down with the parents and having this conversation. I think sitting down with a parent will hopefully change this. But ultimately, yeah, there, there is the consequence where a student could be doing okay and is still kind of punished in this way. And, and that's okay. I'm not, I'm not arguing to change this. But with all other schools, they're not facing that same penalty, right? They're not, we're not sitting down with the parents to have this conversation because there is in this. And when it's, comes to discipline and really serious discipline, you know, we have a lot of leeway with positive pathways or with expulsion, right? So we kind of shift to move a student to what is best for them based on what we know. But we don't have that with other things like attendance. And so I, I also would be supportive of, if we can, if it is within our purview, to say, there is some probation period that you get even with the school you are just zoned to, if we start to see this behavior. And potentially, that's when we have that conversation where it's like, if we don't see this get better, we would highly recommend your student consider alternatives within Orange County public schools. But clearly, this is not working and it is disruptive. So I, what that looks like, obviously, I defer to, to staff, but I, I also would be supportive of kind of providing more of that. It's like just consequences and discipline and students having more choice on seeing that.
Well, and, and also, I think it, it values the other students in the classroom, right? Every time we have, and the biggest thing I hear a lot from teachers is just the constant disruption, 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 disruption. You can't write up a kid 20 times in a class period for talking out of turn and not, you know, being rude, if they're just always rude or whatever. I don't know. Like, there's just all these situations where teachers have to stop and stop and stop. And it's very frustrating for other kids in the class. And if, if regular discipline is kind of not working, then at some point you have to value the other kids in the classroom too. So that's kind of my thinking on that. I'm sorry I spoke in there for a minute. Member Ferrant?
Thank you. I think you have the, I feel like that should be the vice chair's or chair, whoever's running it. You should be able to like jump in whenever, sort of like, yeah, the perk of being in that position. So I just wanted to jump in on this and say, I really do think this would be something I would, we should look into because I hear it all the time from parents, from teachers, even the older students get it. But they see a student misbehaving, doing all sorts of crazy stuff. Maybe they're not getting the Level 4 to actually get expelled, but it is disruptive, constantly late, tardy, whatever it might be, that's just over the top, over and above. But to offer that free and public education at home, I mean, to me, I think that still complies with FAP, in my opinion, because we're still offering you that, that education. But to have the privilege of being in a school setting, if you're not taking advantage of it, then you need to do that at home. We still offer it for free and it's available to you. So I would be more than happy to sit down and discuss that. I don't even know how we would do that, or if it's a policy, or what we would do. But I think it would really empower parents, it would empower teachers, administrators. It's, it, it would create safer environments for kids who are there because they want to learn. Give them, the teachers, the, now they're focusing on the students who are there to learn. And the child who is not doing well in the classroom setting, they can be removed and in place in a different setting that's going to best support their educational needs. So I'm all in favor of it, whatever we got to do to, to bring that forward.
Okay, with that, the board is clear, so you can move on with the rest of the policy.
So if I may, I just have one brief comment. House Bill 1255, which I believe has passed above House and Senate and is waiting for the governor to sign it, does have a new provision that allows frequently disobedient, violent, abusive, et cetera, students to be referred to sin spends, to child in need of services, instead of going, it's usually like through the truancy process, but it does give the schools now more leeway to deal with those students that are frequently disobedient, being written up for tardies that are not necessarily rising to the level of a Level 4. And that is under DJJ, so it's not really going to put them in the criminal sense of it. But if their behavior is not improved, they provide services, they get counseling, they talk, the parents are involved. So if it doesn't get better, then it could lead to more consequences. So schools will have that if the governor signs this. So I just want to put that out there. Okay, so we're picking up on page seven. That language in subsection four, authorized for good cause in the district private or charter school board policy, was updated to align with the statute for participating in extracurricular and activities. And under subsection I, again, we updated language to align with the request from board members that siblings shall be eligible to transfer with the student who has granted the control, open enrollment transfer. So we moved the language about the initial. So if the initial sibling has left the school, but there still is a current sibling at the school, then the new sibling can transfer based on the current sibling being at the school. And subsection C, that's just removing that language about capacity. Same thing in that section, subsection D. Same thing in E. Same thing in both of those sections, removed. We removed the requirement for capacity and allowing siblings to transfer. In section C, the student has been zoned, the student has been rezoned by OCPS and is a rising fifth or eighth grade student, sibling shall be eligible to transfer with the student who has granted this type of grandfather transfer. However, the transfer for the sibling will only be available for one school year. I'm pointing that out because Ms. Neal wants to speak to that. Okay, she just wanted me to highlight that. Again, under hope solidarity, subsection D, we remove the capacity requirement. And we remove subsection G because it's no longer applicable. Hope has been around for long enough that that can be removed. And in subsection F, we remove the language to reside in same household because we defined sibling in the definitions. And that is it.
Thank you very much for this great presentation. I'll give it to the superintendent.
Thank you so much. We have a couple of takeaways or things that we're going to bring back to the board. Appreciate the discussion on this. I do think the changes are going to allow for more choice, more opportunities for our families to see the great things that are happening in our schools. So Greg, Kevia, and Stacy, thank you so much. You guys are amazing. Appreciate you.
Sorry, one second. We did make a change amongst us while we were sitting, talking. If the board would agree under the student continuation criteria, we can change that from the probation being for one grading period to a semester to allow the student to have more time to correct, if you guys are amenable to that, instead of a nine-week period. They will have a semester.
Sorry, I was just saying that quarter versus semester. So grading period, just nine weeks, versus a semester.
So, grading period, just nine weeks, versus a semester. So, it's just, how long do we give a student for probation to improve their behavior before they get transferred back out to the school that they're zoned into?
I'd say the semester.
So, it's, I'm, I'm okay with semester. That gives a little bit more leeway. I don't know. Yeah?
Okay.
Thank you, Stacy.
Member Ferrant?
My question would be if, is this like, so say, are we saying the nine weeks, it would be, you'd be given nine weeks, so even if you, your probation started during the eighth week of school, you have nine weeks from that point?
Yes, so what will be equivalent to nine weeks or a semester? So, we wouldn't say if you're like halfway through the semester, you only have till the end of the semester, you will get the full 18 weeks.
See, I still feel like I'm, I, I feel fine with the nine weeks, because if you can't correct something within nine weeks, that, personally, I feel like nine weeks is a long time, but I'm, whatever the board would prefer.
I, I'm concerned, yeah, maybe we just take a vote on this one, because I don't really care either way. My concern would be if, if it is a big problem, if the attendance is a big problem, which apparently, you know, it is for us to even have this, then I don't know about making a school have to wait 18 weeks to make a change. I feel like nine weeks is a long time for them to allow behavior to change, have these conversations with parents, and hopefully make adjustments. I'm a little concerned about it being 18 weeks, actually.
We can leave it as is, after nine weeks.
Do you want to leave it at nine? Or go, yeah? Okay, we'll leave it at nine, then.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so, General Counsel?
Yeah, well, I just want to alert you a couple of things. Number one, I've drafted some language that we talked about with respect to the congregation, so take a look at it. If you have any comments, let me know. Number two, just really briefly wanted to make you aware, there's been litigation going on up at the United States Supreme Court on various issues. One of them is going to be charter schools and whether we will be required to allow religious charter schools. That decision is coming down by the end of June, so they, you know, when we talk about transfer and choices and all that, if the Supreme Court rules that religious charter schools are required under the free exercise clause, then states are required to allow them and school districts are required to allow them, it'll be a change. So, I wanted to alert you that it's there, it's being decided, and it's something that we're keeping close track of, and whatever they do, we'll be here to get back with you, tell you what the law will now require, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Pomerini. Any other business? All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned.